Make a note, six o'clock. And Heidi's not here. We have a special guest that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Young man, do you want to help us out?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
I move second.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I heard six zero. The MSBA Board Report, please.
Welcome to the December edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. School safety was the theme of the first general session. During that session, MSBA's Executive Director Melissa Randall made a major announcement regarding funding to support school district needs for emergency operations planning and development.
The Department of Public Safety is providing funding for all school districts throughout the state of Missouri to receive for free the application for emergency operation planning that many of you have been using and MSBA developed a few years ago. And so that application, that online tool, along with the training and the support, will now be available to all school districts for free.
MSBA Center for Education Safety is offering free webinars so your school district can find out how to take advantage of this great resource and get trained on the implementation, numerous features, and use of your emergency operations planning tool. Visit the MSBA website for more information on webinar registration. Missouri's 2023 Teacher of the Year Christina Andrade Melly spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. The evening was dubbed "A Night of Champions," and she stressed the importance of being a champion for public schools.
We have done things in education in the last three years that we could never have imagined. The extraordinary has become ordinary because it's what we needed to do for our students and our communities. But I'd encourage you to reach out to the people who did that work, colleagues on your board, your staff, your families, your communities. Thank them, recognize them, and then go out and tell somebody else about it. If we are not telling the stories of public education, of the struggles and the triumphs, somebody else is going to tell our story for us.
Conference General Session keynote speakers included school safety experts Michelle Gay, John McDonald, and Frank DeAngelis, former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard A. Harris, and one of the greatest Olympic track and field athletes of all time, Jackie Joyner-Kersee. The conference featured more than ninety concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, and MSBA's student showcase of public school programs. MSBA's delegate assembly met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. Speaking of advocacy, the 2023 regular session of the Missouri General Assembly convenes on January 4th. MSBA will keep you informed on developments during the legislative session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, critical issue alerts, and immediate updates. Information on legislative issues can also be found on MSBA's Action Center website. And mark your calendar now for MSBA's Legislative Forum, to be held in Jefferson City on March 28th. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed. We leave you this month with words of inspiration from Olympic champion Jackie Joyner-Kersee on the power school board members have by being champions for children.
The greater we are, the more challenges we will face because everyone loves to lift you up, but they really be trying to find a way to tear you down. So the work is never done. So continue on that journey, continue to work hard, continue to meet those challenges. No matter how challenging it is, none of you are giving up on education, giving up on our young people. So you give them the hope, you give them the guidance, you give them the light because a lot of our students are in dim lights and don't believe that it's possible. But you give them the hope that the impossible is probable. So keep doing what you're doing and shining that light.
Okay. Does anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, did anybody sign up for public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, East's presentation.
All right. We actually have a little pivot that we did tonight. So you, we're going to see three schools, if that's okay. We had our students and two of them who are coming tonight are down flew. So it's hard to throw in a first grader to a last minute presentation. So Ms. Hamilton had some fill-ins from middle school and West, which is actually really exciting to see how the program that she's going to talk to you about in the club has grown through three of our buildings. So it's really cool. And what she's going to talk to you guys about in her presentation with the kids is going to be our Read, Write, and Run Club and how it's grown and the impact it's had on three schools. It's really exciting, actually.
Okay, so myself and Jennifer Hunt, our librarian, are the sponsors for our clubs. Today, I'm going to let them talk, but just really quickly, I'll introduce them to you. So this is Nolly's fifth grade student at West Elementary, Quinn, she is a first grade student at East, Ethan, who is a fourth grade student at West, and then London, who is in middle school. So we have a variety, as Mrs. Hickman said, from some of our students. So Nolly, I'll let you take them away.
Read, Write, and Run is a club for boys and girls during the school year. Read, we read twenty-six books in twenty-six fifty and run twenty-six miles. Then we do on our own, we do it at club time and some then we do at our own, at home. We meet Tuesday morning from October until April.
In our club, we come in the gym and run laps while we listen to fun music. We run one mile.
After our run, we do a good deed activity like pick up trash around school, make cards for nourishing phones, or help the cafeteria workers.
We have journals to keep track of our runs, journeys, and books. We earn prizes for completing them.
In April, we're gonna ride a bus together down to Forest Park where we run a twenty-six mile with thousands of other students from other schools all over the state and everything. We get a T-shirt, race bib, and finisher medal, and snacks.
The Read, Write, and Run Club was started in West Elementary in 2720. East Elementary was added in 2021. And this is the very first, and this is the first year that middle school students join the team. While the elementary students will run their final mile, the middle school students will run a bucket at Forest Park. That's it.
I'm surprised that Quinn wasn't able to make it. And I hope she wasn't around the other kids. But if you have questions about what they're doing at East, we're going to put Quinn on the spot. So I'd like to ask Quinn, I'm sure she would answer for you. So anything you have questions about.
She's like daring.
Quinn, you're in first grade, is that correct? So did you participate in it last year?
No.
No, okay. What's your favorite part about the club?
Uh, morning.
Thank you.
Future track star.
Do you get to pick your own books? You can answer, Quinn. You're on the spot for this one.
No.
I love seeing in the morning, they come in early to school to see them. Sometimes they're running around inside, you're like, what's going on? And they have Clorox wipes and they're cleaning all the doors because that's their act of kindness. So they're doing something that surprises us at our building. And I know as they get older, they get to get more out into the community. But when I first was introduced to it, I'm like, wait a minute, they're running a marathon? No, their last mile is what's running Forest Park. I'm like, okay. It is a great program, and I love that Jenna and Jen both have grown it. So the kids who enjoy it continue to just grow with it and continue to do it. So to see that, I appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys coming and filling in and reading from the script that our other kiddos are supposed to do. You'll see us again. In connection with that, you guys know that last year we started our one school new book. So of course, we're doing it again. This year, we had to do a little bit of fundraising to get the books. They're a little expensive, but our new book this year's been weighing heavy. And many have asked, are we going to get a dog? Because last year, my kids only got a hamster, which the hamster's in trouble staying at the secretary's house right now. It keeps escaping, so it can't come to school yet. But many of you came and read with our kids. I have three books, we're ordering more, and we would love if you would like to be a part of that. We'll start in January, February time. And if you're not familiar with it, we all read the same book. Every kid at East Elementary gets a chapter book. We do all kinds of vocabulary, writing, reading engagements. The purpose for them to get it is to bring it home. They read it at home. And then while they're reading it at home, we're reading it at school. We have guest readers, many of you. If you were a guest reader last year, thank you so much. We'd love for you to come back. The kids think it's cool, especially when the teachers say, that's my boss, that's boss. But come and read with us. We do fun activities. And then at the end, we would like this year to have an academic night where all the families from East Elementary get to come in and see what we've been doing and how we've taken one book, read it together, and expanded our vocabulary, expanded our writing, increased our curriculum. But the fact that this will be the first chapter book that a kindergarten or first grade get is really exciting for them. The other cool thing is it's in the language for your home. So if you speak Spanish at home, we have a Spanish copy for our families, and we have English copies for others. And you know, if we start growing into other languages, we'll try to find copies. And as I'm looking at these guys, I think I grabbed the Spanish ones. Oh my gosh, now there's a Spanish copy. They're very similar, so you'd like to challenge yourself. On another note, I'll get you another copy. On another note, I would like to say this year, we did get donations. We had very generous people who were donated, but there was an actually, it'll kind of tear me up a little bit. I did not know the situation. I knew, I know this person who works with me who has an enormous heart. But she came in and said, how much do we have left? And it was quite a bit that we have left to raise. And she donated it in honor of her son. And it was Chad Lewis, which I know many of you are familiar with. And she said, you know, this is the year she's retiring. And she said, this is what I want to leave as a legacy to my son, who, if you don't know her, she is an alumni, her son was a student here, and said, because he was an avid reader. And so to us, that's very special. And so we have stickers inside that are in honor of Chad and being an avid reader and the passion of his mom and family who want us to continue increasing students reading the love word. So I wanted to share that with you. I think that is probably more dear to your heart. I'm sorry, I don't know as well. The books have the dedication for him in it, and we would like to make sure you guys get one. I will get it to you in English, but if anybody would like the two English ones tonight, I could give that to you. If you would like to read, it would mean a lot to us. We'll be sending out stuff, and we'd love for you to come read for our kids. So I'm sorry to make you cry, but I just, it needed to be said. But anybody like the first two copies that we have?
Kids have kids.
Well, the kids already have them. They're stacked up in my office. Each kid has one with their name on it. They don't know it yet, so sorry. An English copy, and then I'll send them over if you want them. That's why I only had two with me, because all of our kids get them first.
And I'll be glad.
We would love it. We would love it.
In February.
Yes, it'll be. It'll be in February, March. We'll send out our schedule. And I, we're just not having much luck. December's not a good. We wanted to honor an A-plus student. Thanks to Matt, we had a little fun with him. But we've been starting to get A-plus students, which we absolutely love. And we wanted to acknowledge the fact that a high school student coming over to work with our little guys, one, they're doing it outside of school hours, they're doing it on their own time, and the dedication that they're taking to do it is fantastic. So we have two young men who've been coming to volunteer in between wrestling and soccer and their other sports. And it's been really exciting. So I wanted to honor Brexton. He's not able to make it. He was going to, and now he can't. But we'll give this to him. The cool thing to see is he has come into the building and just attached to the kids and shared a love of soccer, a love of reading, a love of math. He sits down and talks to them and works with them. And to have a high school student come in and do that and pour such love into little guys is such a great role model. We wanted to honor that. And thank you, Matt, for sending over your A-plus kiddos. We know it also is helping them with college and career. The other really neat thing that he does is we have one little guy who just looks up to him like he, I tell him, I'm like, you're a god to these guys. And he looks up to him. That Brexton will walk him out to the bus every time he's there, just to give him that extra attention. So that's really cool to see, that we've got kiddos that are in high school who are like, yeah, I'm cool enough to walk a first grader out to the bus every day. So we'll give it to him, but if you see him, please tell him thank you as well. Next thing will probably come as a whole group.
You're past the point.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your Christmas break.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for climate survey, I think, Chris, you've developed some sort of presentation?
I have not.
Or someone did.
But no presentation, but I know Dr. Way plans to go over that briefly with you.
Okay, so why don't we let Dr. Way get through his presentation? And then from there, then we can ask questions.
Yeah, I just want to hit some highlights. You'll notice that there's two surveys in there, one for staff, one for parents. They look different years past. Coming down from M sub six and DESI, starting next year, just so you're aware, we'll actually have four surveys. We'll have the staff one, that'll kind of be on steroids. There'll be sixty-two items next year. The parent survey is pretty close to the one we have this year, about thirty items. And then there's a survey for sixth through twelfth graders, there'll be about forty-two items on there, and thirty-two items for grades three through five. Okay, that'll be next year. We were kind of anticipating those coming out and us to be able to see them in August and September. It didn't happen until October. Once we saw them, we met with our committee and kind of tweaked the staff one because if you remember, we had a staff survey that was taking our staff thirty minutes before. We got away from that. And so we tried to minimize that this year. But again, if nothing changed with DESI and M sub six, we anticipate having sixty-two item one next year. One of the downsides that we saw with the DESI one was, and I got a couple emails from our classified staff, is they thought some of the questions that pertain to them. So that was something that I don't know how to get around at this point. You know, when we look at these surveys, so they had the week of like November 24th, I think, to about December 4th to take them. And I think it's human nature, we kind of look to the negative or look at things we can improve upon right off the bat. And a couple things that come to mind that Doug and Chris and I talked about this past week was, one thing I didn't see coming was, we had some comments about PD from our staff pertaining to EL and SPED, and I didn't see that coming. I know we've put some emphasis on that in the past year or so, but you know, Doug's kind of got a plan for second semester in this summer to address that. We also had something with achievement gap. There seemed to be a lot with achievement gap, EL or SPED. And so we've had some conversations about that as well. If you'll notice, between the parent and the staff one, there's differences about bullying. There was a question about bullying and what the staff thinks, we're doing a pretty good job compared to what the parents think on that. So I'm kind of anxious to see what our buildings are coming up with next month for that. We have had some training through our legal counsel this past semester with our admin about bullying. But again, it's something that we have to address based off of what we saw in here. Personally, one that bothers me, it was on our staff one, it was one of our lowest ones. There was a question about the district practices to foster self-care and well-being among staff. That was at fifty-seven percent, said strongly agree or agree. And so one of the things I'm working with, with Doug and our trust wellness, is them coming into one of our PD days next semester, try to address some of, you know, helping our teachers with that, you know, stress, all those good things. So we're looking at this already, we're starting to develop some plans. But those are some things that, you know, when you first look at it, that stood out to me and things that we want to address right off the bat. You know, I'm going to flip on you now, but I will say, there's a lot of good stuff in here, too. You know, and sometimes we don't, we don't highlight that, but I just wanted to run through a couple of these things with you real quick. Under our staff surveys, this is the percentage of people that said strongly agree or agree. I feel safe at school, ninety-one percent. I am treated with respect at school, ninety-one percent. Treating students fairly and promoting positive behavior, ninety-one and eighty-nine percent. I feel like I belong at school, ninety percent. Collaboration among staff, eighty-nine percent. Parents are viewed as partners, eighty-three percent. There's a lot of good on there coming from the staff. And then on the parent side as well, some of the ones that stood out, when they talk about technology, school provides technology necessary to promote student learning, eighty-nine percent. I am comfortable talking to teachers at school, eighty-six percent. I feel welcome at school, eighty-six percent. Child feels safe at school, eighty-five percent. And there's a couple more on there. They're not as high as those nineties. There's definitely room for improvement. But next steps for us, I know Doc's going to lead CSIP out, he's taken some of this information for that. We, us three have started having conversations, what we can do on the district level. And then as usual, next month, our buildings will present during their CSIP reports. They don't present, but they'll have it in their CSIP reports, kind of their next steps. They've been meeting with their leadership teams to come up with their building goals and action steps. That's coming next month, though. Questions for me?
Erin, you got any questions?
Ah, you don't? Thank you.
Michael?
When it comes to the staff, do we have an EAP program, or is that something that we've ever thought about trying to get? Or is it not?
We have something through our insurance, not all of our people have. Yeah, but that's what we have.
I'm good, thank you. I have none.
Me neither.
One of the things that I noticed, because it's so close to my heart, is concern that we might be getting away from the ruler training or that new people, new admin isn't getting the ruler training. Of course, it doesn't have to be exactly, you know, step by step, but I think that's been such a good program. Now we stick with that one.
Yeah, I don't see us getting away from it. No.
I think the transition at the building probably had a play in that, but no. In fact, our efforts have been broadened up to even the high school. And of course, as those students leave West and then the middle school and high school, they'll say.
Take it with them.
You have to take it with them. So no, it's certainly dear to your heart, no doubt, and districts are, too. So you'll see that be a priority, I think, moving forward.
And then there was just one comment about doors being propped open, and I went, ah! So we got to not do that.
So this year, one of the things we've talked about in safety over and over is if nothing else, we want to see every door locked on the outside. That's like the number one thing that police officers tell us and our SROs. And so it is something that we have pounded through admin, and I know admin has pounded that home. And so anytime we don't see one, we make a big deal about it. We just had a safety meeting last week, and one of our things where we're trying to plant people in the building and see if they can get in. And so some of our people were having a hard time getting in. Our twenty-year-old police officer, twenty-looking-year-old police officer was trying to get in, so we actually had to let him in in order to walk the halls. So it is something that we're emphasizing, especially this year.
So you actually touched on everything I was going to ask about. You know, primarily, there was some disconnect between the parents and the staff on the bullying, so I think that would be an interesting, it'd be interesting to see how we approach that. You know, Dr. Berger and I talked about that a little bit, and it'd be interesting to see where that goes. There was an issue with cleanliness that, you know, we just, I think that's just, we need to dot our i's and cross our t's and, you know, and just, you know, look into that a little bit. But other than that, the stuff that you, the needs improvement part, you, that's what I noticed when I looked at the survey, too. And you addressed it, so. Any other questions on the climate survey? Okay. Student performance, CSIP reports. Does anybody have any questions on any of the other reports?
I'm assuming sickness is the reason the attendance is continuing to.
Yeah. We're seeing the school districts across the state actually shutting down, you know, when they hit a certain threshold where they'll just shut down. Not getting a lot done. We saw evidence of that tonight in the presentation. My own household, three of my, all three that attend the school were, oh, no, Tilly went back today. Tilly didn't go back today. Yeah, so we were two for, we were one for three. We were one for three in my household. So, you know, we've been hit hard, so it's a good time for the break.
So, you know, something I want to say about attendance is, all of our administrators are doing the best they can and knocking, and trying to figure out how to get attendance. I think we would be remiss if at least we don't acknowledge that our administrators are really trying to do what they can to keep our attendance numbers up. So I know you're frustrated with it. I know you are sometimes depressed about or demoralized, but just know that we know that you're doing the best you can. And all I think we can ask you to do is just, you know, keep a stiff upper lip and put a smile on your face and just do the best you can. So we appreciate what you're trying to do and understand sometimes that the numbers don't reflect, you know, the efforts that you're putting into it. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Anything else on the CSIP reports anybody would like to bring up? Okay, the next thing is the summer school report.
Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, everyone. Again, here's a summer school report, I'll probably hit a few highlights if we do have some questions. I will do my best to answer in those two areas that are mine. Veronica and Chris can talk probably more a little bit about the financials. Twenty-twenty-two summer school, we did see get a little rebound in enrollment or attendance, not back to the pre-COVID days yet, but hopefully we will get there. We did have five hundred and ninety-two. Part of this report is those survey results, and some catapult learning does a survey of both the parents and the staff members. That first one you will see is on a four-point scale, so four would be strongly agree. So we get to see, you know, what our parents think about our summer school program. See, those are pretty high numbers almost across the board. The most exciting part for me is that as I look back on these reports over the last few years, almost always the lowest number for parents was transportation. This year, if you can look there, transportation was the highest ranking thing. So I'd like to, you know, call out Jeff Samuel, Echo Ride, for that because for the first time since I have been in this role that I can remember, the parent survey for summer school attendance was really solid. So like I said, across the board, you know, we're thinking three is agree, four is strongly agree, and those numbers for parents, I think, are really high and feel that there's some value to what we're doing. The next survey results are for the, what the teachers did and what the teachers surveyed. What I was really excited to see, we had a new site administrator this year for our secondary program or our upper program. That received the highest marks that we've gotten out of that. I think Mr. Jere did a really nice job running that. And again, everything there is, you know, agree or above. So again, I appreciate those. So those are some of the better scores that we've gotten on those surveys in the time that I have actually been there. There weren't any negative comments whatsoever when you looked at the comments. The second part of this is the financial report. You can look at that information data there and give a.
Mr. Smith, I could pick up on it.
Yeah, I'll let him pick up that one.
So you look at that page there, I think it's page five that Amy's on, and you see that ADA, we're almost rebounded from our pre-COVID years of, we generated ninety-three ADA, and above there for twenty-two, we generated sixty-six ADA. So a little ways to go, but we're getting close. And you know, we are paid on the state formula on ADA. So it's oversimplifying it a little bit, but you can say noses. How many noses did you have at summer school? How many, how many did you get there that creates a thousand forty-four hours, which creates one ADA? And for that, you're going to get an amount of money from the state. So if you look down at this spreadsheet there, that little clip down there, you can see that this year, we lost about forty thousand dollars. And that's, that's using predominantly catapult's calculation that we've used historically with one exception. So what I'll do is, you know, I'm kind of, we got the summer school report as a whole, and I'm going to tease one little thing that I'm going to inform the board that the administration's looking at. Amy, if you'll go down to the little sheet, it's the two thousand and nineteen down there. And you have one up in there, I think, and to write.
To write?
Yeah. There you go. There you go, right there. And if you went to, go to the bottom, and you'll see this, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, that was a positive. We, this is misstated, and this is historically what Catapult has given us, that we've used as a plus or a negative, and it's always been a plus in terms of what we make. And the reason is, is because they take the ADA times state accuracy target. And we caught this upon me entering the district, that it shouldn't be taking ADA times sixty-two seventy-five. It's, the formula goes through an equity factors, and down on line twelve, it tells you what you get per ADA. And it's not sixty-two seventy-five. So, I know I'm being a little complicated, but it's four thousand dollars. But, so, they're overstated probably two hundred thousand right here. And so, we asked them about it. We had a rep that couldn't answer why that occurred. We went through COVID. We knew we weren't going to make any changes. We also knew that at the end of the contract for Catapult, that was not up. Go back up there now, Amy. So, even though we do have less ADA, we have a more accurate, yes, I think, up on the, I'm sorry, it's one in the center. We have a more accurate number of what we're generating per ADA, and that's giving us a negative number. So, that kind of affirms the thought of, we outsource our summer school. Or, could we take our summer school back and potentially do a better summer school, potentially, and also perhaps get back positive? Because this tells us right now, even though we had a sixty, whatever it was, sixty, I'm sorry, sixty-six ADA, we generated sixty-six ADA. If we got anywhere from sixty-six or back to normal at ninety-ish, could we then get positive? Because we don't think we ran positive historically, and I don't know that we never get back positive when we calculate it accurately. So, we're having some conversations with Catapult. The challenge is, is we, to take it over ourselves again, would require Doug to put together a lot of curriculum for that. And right now, you know, you guys are well-versed on how difficult it is to get folks to do stuff outside of contract. Obviously, they need to compensate for it. That's not even the issue. They just, you know, there's not a lot of want to do things like, of that nature. So, we want to tackle that when our people are ready. But we're ready when we don't have, you know, too many balls there. We know we're going through MSEP six for the first time next year. That may be, so, as opposed to writing a multi-year contract with Catapult, or trying to negotiate with them as a year-to-year. At some point, just kind of, you know, putting this on the board's radar, we may look at a deep analysis of, okay, what can we do if we did it ourselves? And, you know, that may be a really, really blowing-up summer school and rebuild it, you know, versus what we've done here traditionally. Even better if we come out positive on the money, on it. Because there are certainly many school districts in Missouri that subsidize the regular education by making money in summer school, so to speak. So, our goal would always, at least, to get positive, you know. And if we make some money, they can subsidize regular, even better. So, kind of teasing that. I know I'm pulling away from Mr. Smith's overall summer school...
Just another, another point to that is that with Catapult, as part of our summer school contract, the evaluate test, which we use as our ongoing benchmark measure, that gets reported out every month in those CSIP reports, is a part of that agreement. If we were to not use Catapult as part of our summer school, we would have to either fund that ourselves, so that's a dollar twenty-five per student, per test. So, that would be a dollar twenty-five per student in September, a dollar twenty-five per student in October. Okay? Or we would have to begin to rely on our assessments, which is really kind of a belief, the path that we're trying to get to, is to develop our own and the accuracy of them. And again, one of the things that we spoke on in our admin meeting this week was, we want to start getting to a point where those assessments that we are creating at the building level have congruence with what we're seeing in evaluate, and then have congruence with what we're seeing on end-of-the-year state map or EOC tests. And when we start to see that connection between those, evaluate will be something that is probably less valuable to us, but we're not at that point right now. So, right now, that contract that we have with Catapult provides us evaluate as part of that agreement.
So, timeout. So, a dollar twenty-five per student is, how many, how many tests do we give out?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, so fifteen hundred times a dollar twenty-five, times that by whatever. So, instead of losing thirty-nine thousand dollars, we didn't lose thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. I think what Veronica and I have kind of come to is it's a wash currently. But here's the important thing, now, here's the new information for the board. You're not making a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
You're, you're, right now, you're probably at a wash, is kind of what we've...
I think it was about twenty-eight-five was the evaluate. And then, Catapult also donated six thousand dollars to the band boosters, athletics, and...
The foundation.
Foundation. Yeah. So, it was pretty much a wash.
Yeah. Well, we're sure a wash. You know what? That's some Montgomery County coming in.
Part three, the last page of that summer school report is, you know, the third part of this would be, you know, really, our credit summary of course completers. We use Catapult for elementary and middle school students. We have continued to try to expand our offerings for summer school for high school students. Previously, it was just credit recovery or credit acquisition. Last year, we did Spanish in twenty-one that summer. And this year, we tried to offer high school PE to get some high school students able to get some credits in advance. We actually had thirteen students who got their high school PE, one of their high school PE credits this summer. So, we had thirty students also who got some credit recovery or credit acquisition. We actually have students pick up twenty-four and a half credits over summer as well. In addition to the thirteen PE credits, that's one of those things that Mr. Brooks, Mr. Rainey, and I are going to try to ensure that we even have bigger numbers. And Jennifer Hamilton, who was here earlier, taught summer school PE for us this year, and hopefully, will again next year. That is the summer school report.
Do we track the kiddos that attend summer school? And what, like, the difference in maybe the summer slide from those kids to the kids that do not attend? So that we could track if that's, you know, what their...
Return investment, maybe?
Right, their academic performance is, if we can correlate that at all to this?
We do not, in terms of those students who just attend as part of the regular process. Now, those students who come and do reading interventions, who've done that the last two summers? Yeah. We have tracked them because they came and got specific interventions, specific reading. But in terms of the other students, no. We've got...
I think that would be, I don't know how that would even work, but that, I think that would be interesting to see if there's, you know, if that lessens that, if that lessens that gap for the fall.
We can study that up, see if we can pull something together. You know, we're, the board is due another...
Information would be out there. It's just nothing that we've ever pulled and looked at.
The board is due another student performance report. You know, we've talked, and we're back to been kind of hammering at that in terms of wanting to compare school districts to school districts in the conference and in the region. So, we'll try to pull something together with that. I can, I'm quickly going through some of the challenges of it, but I don't want to just air it up. But let us work on it. When we come back with that student performance report, we'll let you know if we can pull that or not. And if we can't pull that, perhaps it's something we can set the table for before.
Thank you.
Michael, any questions?
No, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Heidi?
I'm good, thanks.
No.
Oh, no, I just think it's a really positive response in the surveys, and I'm fine if it's a wash.
Okay. Moving on, do we need approval?
I do not think we need approval. I think it was just a written report.
Okay. Audit.
Yes, Rebecca on the phone.
So, again, Rebecca, oh, gosh, not Frederick, said she's not on the phone. What is her name?
Baker.
Baker, Frederick Baker. Did our audit again. We anticipate her to report a very good, clean audit. We'll see if she bloods out this. I don't believe she will. It is Veronica's first year writing on it, so...
This is Rebecca.
Hello, Rebecca, it's Veronica, the finance of the district. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All right. We are ready for your report. You have the board here.
Rebecca, you might give them a chance. If you don't have the audit brought up in PDF, if they want to take a moment, and then, I think Rebecca will be taking you through, you know, the pages she'll direct you to where to place your attention. So, Rebecca will turn it over to you, and if you get to going too fast or something, myself or the board president will try to slow things down.
Okay. Okay, I'll try to pause every once in a while.
With that...
And, so, hello, everybody. My name's Rebecca Baker. I'm a CPA with KPM CPAs out of Springfield. And we have actually performed three engagements for the district for the June thirty, twenty-twenty-two year. And I'm going to briefly discuss each of those with you tonight. So, like Dr. Berger said, if you have a copy of the report, the electronic copy, I will call out the page numbers in case you'd like to follow along.
So, just a pointer, one order. Hold on a second. So, on your PDF, if you hit Ctrl G, then you can go right to the page. So, if you want to go to the page, you just hit Ctrl G, type three, and then it'll take you right to the page. All right. So...
Okay. So, page three is our independent auditor's report. The first engagement that we conducted is the financial statement audit. And we perform an audit to determine if the district's financial statements are presented fairly and all material respects necrons with a modified cash basis of accounting. And then, we issue an opinion based on our audit results. And the district has received an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion that he's given. So, congratulations. And next, we'll briefly go over the financial statements. If you'd like to turn to page eleven. Page eleven is the statement of receipts, disbursements, and changes in fund balances for the four different funds of the district. And the first column is the general fund. The general fund increased almost six hundred and eighty-one thousand last year, ending with a balance of seven point two million. The reserve in the general fund was around thirty-three point six-six percent. What that means is if the district didn't receive any money starting July first of twenty-two, you have about four months of reserves on hand to pay normal operating expenses. That's a pretty common reserve right now that we're seeing in districts. The debt service fund, which is the third column over, increased about one point three million, ending at two point four million dollars. And this fund, of course, is to pay the, your bonded debt. The last column, or the next to last column is the capital projects fund. And the capital projects fund increased fifty-three, almost fifty-four million dollars, ending with fifty-five point four million. And that's because the district issued the bonds and the certificates of participation during the year. And you still have most of those funds on hand at June thirty, twenty-two. I would imagine you've probably spent quite a bit of those since then. And those bonds and CFPs were issued for the new high school and also various other projects around the district. Okay, if you just turn one page to page twelve. Page twelve is where the notes for the financial statements begin. I'm not going to go over the notes, but I did want to point them out to you. They are required part of the financial statements. We do issue our opinion on the notes. And they do give more detailed information on the district's significant accounting policies, the taxes and investments that you have, future debt service, et cetera. So, I do encourage you to read the notes in conjunction with the financial statements. Okay, next one is page forty-four. The second engagement that we complete for the district is a federal compliance audit. So, anytime a district spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, you are required to have a federal compliance audit. The district had about two point five million dollars in federal spending this past year. And on page forty-one and forty-two, it will detail the different federal rewards that you received. And we had to test point program this year. And this kind of gives a summary, if we have any findings, which you can see as you read through, that there are no findings to report. But we tested the child nutrition program. And if we did have findings, this report goes to the federal government, and they would decide what kind of corrective action that you would need to have. This still will go to the federal government, showing them that you had this program tested, and that there were no findings. So, the last engagement I want to go over is on page forty-eight. This is our state compliance examination. And this is called the Schedule of Selected Statistics. So, DESSY provides this schedule every year. They come out with a list. There weren't any changes from the previous fiscal year. And there's different things that the district's getting paid, receiving funding on based on information that you're submitting to DESSY. And they want us to look at your source records and make sure that what you're submitting to them is accurate. And so, there are different things that we look at, like attendance, your transportation information. You do a forty million discount during the year. And there's some other state laws that we're supposed to check to make sure that you're in compliance with. And then, we report here to DESSY if there is any noncompliance. And I am happy to say that we do not have any noncompliance to report in this section. So, pretty good audit overall, I would say. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is just the staff of the district and how everyone that we work with during the course of the audit is very professionally cooperative. And Veronica survived her first audit. She did a really good job as the business manager. It's her first time to go, but she's been through an audit with us before, but she doesn't lose the audit this year, and she did a really good job. And Connie was always a pleasure to work with as well. And we'll miss her, but Veronica did a really good job. And everybody that we deal with is really helpful, so we appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions?
I have none. Alice?
No.
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 Good.
No, thank you.
Rebecca, Dr. Berger, you have any final thoughts for Rebecca before we let her go?
No, thank you, Rebecca. We always appreciate your visit in and appreciate this time, too, to kind of put the nail in the coffin of the previous fiscal year. So, thank you for helping the district out.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
So, good job.
Thanks.
I need a motion to approve the FY twenty-two audit. So, move on.
Second.
Any more discussion? On behalf of myself, thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
I know it's a renegrum. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven-zero. All right, next thing on the agenda is our legislative platform, and we have a visitor tonight. Representative, I guess it's technically Representative-elect Myers still.
Correct.
But Representative Myers is our new, is going to be our new state representative, and we invited him here tonight to share some thoughts with us on what his personal goals are for the next legislative session, as well as what he's seen from an educational perspective. And then, after he's done, and then we can ask him some questions. And then, after that, then we can go over our legislative priorities and then kind of see where things agree and disagree. And then, we can kind of, and then, please note, we will be up there on March twenty-eighth to visit with you. And then, hopefully, we can get Senator Brown to come visit us too some day in the future. So, your floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come in. Has been something on my list of things to get done, which my list just constantly keeps populating and adding more to the end. I'll start off, though, with saying thank you for those, ladies and gentlemen, of the board, because going through this process, I understand that when you, when you step forward and say, "Hey, I'm willing to serve my, my community by, I put my name on a ballot, I'll go through an election, and, and, you know, if people pick me, then now I get to sit in a seat where everybody can come in and tell me everything's wrong." And then, you get to make those decisions. Some of them aren't easy. So, thank you for, for your service and stepping forward and volunteering for your community. A little bit about myself, for those that don't know, I'm a retired state trooper. I grew up in Warrenton. My wife and I both graduated from Warrenton. We've been together since we were kids. And then, the highway patrol kind of took us around, and we came back here and landed back in twenty-fifteen, because it's where we grew up, that's where we went to stay. The opportunity came around to run for state representative, it's something I've been interested in. I've spent nineteen years on the executive board of the Troopers Association. So, I kind of learned a little bit about the legislative process. Had an interest in politics, so I raised my hand. And then, after that, the storm started getting going. But we came out on top, and we won. And I'm really looking forward to representing the folks that I live with, because I, as you get out, that's one really good thing about... with. Because as you get out, that's one really good thing about going out and campaigning is you get to talk to people and you listen to their views. And oh, you know what? They're not much different than mine, for the most part. There's a few that, you know, if you get on Facebook, that'll tell me differently. But for the most part, we're all pretty much in agreement. When you talk about legislative priorities, I could stand here all day and talk about public safety, the ins and outs. And that's one of the main motivators of why I got involved in there was to at least be a voice inside the room, far my brothers and sisters are still out walking that line tonight. And every night that we get to sleep safely in our bed. And I wanted to be able to make sure that I represent, I could represent their voice as somebody who actually did the job, you know, rested people and went through, you know, the shift work and everything that goes on. But I did, I finished up a degree at Central Methodist where I got a degree in physical education. But after doing my six weeks of student teaching in middle school, I knew I was carrying a gun. Going into this process, you're going to hear some things. Priorities in the House this year and actually in the Senate, probably the first thing that's going to happen is initiative petition reform. It's something that's out there. It just, it needs to be tweaked a little bit to be a little bit more inclusive of all of our state. I think some of the things that have been going on lately just favor metropolitan areas. And it's a way to circumvent the will of all the folks that live in the state. And I mean, if you know, if I only have to collect signatures in six out of eight districts, and I leave out a big chunk of southern Missouri and northern Missouri. And then their voices get drowned out by a popular vote that takes place in the metropolitan area where there's heavier weight. So we're looking at options to include everybody. The other thing you're going to hear about is education reform. Everybody knows it's out there, whether that's open enrollment, you know, how tax dollars are spent to follow kids. It's something that, when I read, DESSY, I guess, put out their legislative priorities, and I was reading those this morning. They obviously are starting to see that writing on the wall and are going to try to engage in those conversations as well. Whenever the school question always comes up, I tell people that the schools where I live, they work for us. But also, when I was on the tour last week, we went down to charter school down in the city. And you know, those schools down there don't have the same structure that these do, that ours do. And so, you know, there are solutions for that. It might be charter schools for them. But I don't know how that would ever fit out here. But those are things that are going to be discussed. And I'm always trying to learn more about the issue. Again, like I said, I could talk about public safety all day. Education, I know a little bit. And I'm learning a whole lot more. And only others, 16 other different things that are coming down the pike. So I'm looking forward to representing all of you all and the folks that live here. I don't have any contact information to be able to give out right now, as far as on the House side. But once I do, I will get that to Dr. Berger. So you guys, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. And that goes for, it goes for the, you know, the parents in the school districts as well. And because I want to be able to get the opinions of the folks that I live with. And that way, I can be their voice in Jefferson City on those issues.
So one of the things that I'd like to speak to you about is, if you look at our legislative priorities up there, you know, there's that one, we support local control decisions and lifting the 15% bonding capacity upon voter approval. You know, one of the things right now, the reason we had to go out for lease purchase certificates for our high school was because, you know, the high school costs more than what we could legally bond for. And I think, you know, this is something that's been on my mind. If that bonding capacity could be increased, then what happens is we don't have to do lease purchase. We don't have to worry about taking money out of operating in order to pay for capital projects. So, you know, if I could stress on you one thing that, you know, had you look into and research a little bit more, that would be one of them. And then the other thing is, you know, you talk about the difference between urban and rural districts. One of the things is transportation. So, you know, if you get down to like Brentwood or whatever, you know, it's a very compact, small district. They don't have much transportation dollars. And when transportation's not fully funded, okay, whatever. You get to Warrenton, Montgomery County, you get to us, and stuff like that, you know, not fully funding transportation becomes more of an issue because now we're taking out, we're taking money out of classrooms because it's not fully funded. I mean, last year it was fully funded because we got the extra money. But typically, when it's not fully funded, then we're taking money out of the classroom in order to run buses. So, you know, as you, as you get into the weeds of some of this stuff, I mean, those are two things I'd like you to remember as you do your, as you do your job. I'll just go down the line here and have a quick conversation.
Well, it sounds like a, it sounds like a business thing. And I asked for my committees, and I made sure I stayed as far away from budget as possible. I explain it this way. I tell people I'm a people person, and my wife's a numbers person, you know, so me and adding, yeah, I pass. But yeah, that's something that I'll be kind of, thank you.
Alice, you have anything, Representative?
Um, no. I think legislative positions speak for me.
Okay.
And we'll go through them one at a time here in a second. Dave?
I don't really have anything either.
Mary?
I think you know how I feel. We've had many conversations, so.
I certainly do.
You know where I stand on public education and that we are here to, we were elected to represent our public education. And so anything that puts politics into school board elections, whether it be changing the election date to November, which is going to come up again, you know, in that we need to keep school board bipartisan and do what's best for kids, not what's best for our political parties.
Thank you for coming in. I really appreciate your time. And I think our legislative platform pretty much represents how I feel. And we have a good relationship going forward.
Anything to add, other than as much as we're a resource for us, we want to be a resource for you, too. So if you have questions about, you know, something that we could help.
Absolutely.
We would be more than happy to have those conversations as well.
Certainly.
When it comes to public education, we're all headed together. So.
Sure. I should be getting my.
To be collaborative.
You know, how would it affect Wright City?
Well, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring and for serving. And, you know, hopefully, it's a good time for you and for the people that you serve. So you said that you had served on the board for the state troopers, and that's kind of what made you go into that, because you know that, right? You know public safety. I would ask that when you're looking at bills that have to do with education, that you turn to the people who know education and not lobbyists or other people in a party. That you turn to Dr. Berger, Dr. Way, Mr. Smith, Dr. Plains-Smith, the folks that are in your county that have devoted their life to education, and use them as resources and depend on their expertise to help formulate a good decision for whatever educational policies come in. Other than that, same thing with these guys, I think our legislative positions kind of say what our priorities are. I appreciate you running and coming in here and talking with us. And yeah.
Well, to follow up on what you said, I've learned this lesson a long time ago. I don't need to know everything. I just need to know people.
Right.
Who know a lot about the one thing I need to know. And so that's, that has been my practice for years. And if I have questions, I go out and seek people that are in the industry or in, that's their bailiwick, so to speak. That's their area of expertise. Because they're going to be able to provide that perspective that I might not have. And I really do, I explain to people, when you think about legislation, think about it like looking at a diamond. You can look at it and it's, oh, that's really pretty. And then you turn it just a little bit, and you get so many more different colors and lights coming from different directions. And you really have to be careful, I think, when you look at things of the law of unintended consequences, because I have a really good idea. I think this is, this is it. Man, the people that I lived with back home, they really support that idea. But then again, it doesn't necessarily, it might have that left hook that's coming around that you didn't see. So I really do try to do that. The other thing that I will say is this, I've made it very clear, if I go to Jefferson, or on my way to Jefferson City, I'm not, I don't need, you know, five pieces on the wall with my name of bills that I passed. That's not my gig. I want to go up there, I'll support pieces of legislation that are good for here and good for the people we live with. And I will work my backside off to make sure that those get passed. Or, you know, if there's a bill that's coming up, and I have information, say, just say, for example, with some of the gaming things that are coming up, the gambling bill. So I've spent my last two years of my career working in the gaming division of Highway Patrol. So we work in and handle the MTC. I understand a lot about how slot machines work. I understand about what a sports book would mean to the state of Missouri. And so with that, you know, I've already reached out to the sponsors of those bills. And I'm talking to them, hey, what can we do to make sure that they're licensed, to make sure that our constituents, our consumers have protections and resources against, you know, if they have complaints, where, how does that get done? And it's the best product that we can put out. I mean, I've been a big fan of, I don't necessarily like slot machines in my gas station. But if we can make that to where it's, it's at least regulated and the money that can at least get captured for education and veterans, you know, like it's supposed to be. And so that's going to be my main focus going forward. So don't be surprised if you don't see me have my name on a whole lot of bills, even though I did file one the first day. But that was a little bit different story. But I plan on working on, just really actually trying to get some things accomplished. I think that's kind of what, when I talk to folks, that was the biggest thing. Hey, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? And look, you guys, we're going to hear, there's a lot of social issues out there that, a lot of these things are coming to a head. And you all are going to be the deciding, on the local control side, on how some of that goes. Because you get the complaints, you know, or you hear the rumors. And you are the ones that are to the front line on deciding on where those things go. But those become a lot of political issues, so to speak. And it becomes the focus of a lot of, some pieces of legislation you'll probably hear coming up. I know there's one guy who filed probably like 20 different bills. And some of those dealt with that. So.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
We're quickly going to go through the rest of the legislative priorities. And then we appreciate your help.
Well, great.
And congratulations to you.
Yes, congrats.
So Dr. Berger, you want to quickly walk us through these? And we can decide if we want to make any changes or go from there?
Yeah, of course. First one, we support ensuring the foundation formula continues to be fully funded. That's a really fundamental one that's on just about everybody's legislative platform. And I'll pause. And if they may want to chime in on anything. Support planning to fully fund the transportation formulas. As Mr. Jones alluded to, the formula was funded fully this year or very near fully. We'll see how it shakes out. I know the appropriations chair has mentioned that he intends that that to be the norm, but for sure, that stays because it is really critical to the rural schools. Support legislation that provide adequate funding and technical support to all the school districts so they may offer quality voluntary pre-kindergarten education programs, including the PAT program. And I know that's a priority of the board. Mr. Jones spoke about the 15% bonding capacity. Next one, we oppose underfunded, unfunded or underfunded state mandates. Oppose legislation that would divert local or state revenue from public schools to non-public educational entities through the use of tuition tax credits, vouchers, and/or education savings account of any kind. And I think that's one that the board is probably most well-versed on, that one, when we will come up and see here in a few weeks. We support student assessment systems that include multiple methods of measuring student growth and performance. So not putting all of our eggs in one basket.
Well, but that one, I think M sub 6 kind of addresses that a little bit.
With continuous components of performance improvement and continuous growth component. That's right. We support virtual education options provided by other entities. When such courses are rigorous, courses are taught by Missouri-certified teachers and qualified college professors. The curriculum is aligned to the Missouri standards. And the course and provider are approved by the local board as part of the public school district curriculum. So a little bit of that holds control and also keeping resources in state with those Missouri-certified teachers. Repose legislation that rose the authority of local school boards and undermines the voice of local voters. Think that's one that our boards of Missouri are challenged with frequently. So that's, I know that's an important one to the board. We oppose changes to the municipal election calendar for board members for tax-related elections. That's going to be a hot issue, I think, coming into this session. And Ms. Gray, we spoke to that. Repose any mandates, incentives, and others support for states to initiate, to expand charter schools unless those charter schools are sponsored by a public school board and are subject, very important, and are subject to the same accountability measures as public schools. We will concede a lot of issues among charter schools as long as they're held in the same standards of public schools. Real briefly on the Fed legislative positions, because we know the states where most of our voice is directed to. We support full funding of federal commitments to special education programs and title programs. We support federal government. We support federal government should meet its promise of providing 40% of the average cost of educating special needs students. And lastly, we oppose federal mandates, incentives, or other federal support for states to initiate or expand charter schools unless those charter schools are sponsored by a public school board and, underscored once again, are subject to the same accountability standards as public schools. And I hate to just read those to you. And it should have taken a typical.
That's good.
Perfect.
Does anybody have anything they want to change? On the state side or the federal side? Okay, so not hearing anything, then we'd like to hear a motion to approve. The legislative platform is presented.
Summon.
Second.
And there's a motion, second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 7-0.
Slightly out of order for me, Mr. President, if you allow. I will mention that there is a, what am I, what am I trying to say? That what's anticipated is the open enrollment bill. There is some language that school districts are considering approving outside of their legislative platform. And it isn't even in our legislative platform. You know, Representative Pollitt has had a bill that's.
Former school superintendent.
You bet. School superintendent. And I know there's a long story to, you know, MSBA getting involved and kind of getting their nose slapped, which I think they were actually ahead of the game. As you mentioned, Representative Myers, DESSY is now going to try to, you know, get to the table so they can help with that, because open enrollment may be coming. But the, what am I trying to say? The declaration, I guess. Somebody give me a synonym for that. But my ELA guy, Doug Smith, go get off his phone, he can give me one. But the declaration is to, for the board to make the statement that they're just against open enrollment, you know, completely black and white issue. But I didn't bring that to the board because I just received it this week. And I wanted a little chance to kind of see the lay of the land. But I might take some feedback from the board briefly on open enrollment, or if that's something you'd like to have on the agenda to consider.
MSBA wants to be at the table for any, any, any open enrollment talks. They don't want to say, we don't want it. And then if something would happen that, you know.
Then they have no say.
Then they have no say. They have, their, if their advocacy platforms are to say, no, we're not going to do it, then if it does happen, we, MSBA wants to be at the table to say, this is how it's going to affect public school districts.
The one that's offered is published by mayor right now. And it's a pretty big topic among super new circles. But it is just a black and white. It's, you know, we will not support it across the board. And I'm, knowing that we're pretty connected to MSBA, I didn't know what MSBA's position was on that declaration specifically. So it may be something that the board doesn't want to take up. It could be something that the board wants to take up just to discuss, you know.
Well, my concerns with open enrollment are varied. But one of them is you're going to see, you're going to see the poaching of athletes. So the issue is, you know, you don't want a Parkway coming out or a Wentzville coming out and saying, you know, looking at, you know, our star athletes and saying, hey, you know, you can come to Wentzville and incentivizing that kid to go to Wentzville. Then the other issue, you know, with money or whatever else that happened. But the other issue is then, okay, if that student chooses to base through open enrollment to go to. to go to that school, does it, where does the local tax money go? Where does, how does that kid get transported to Wentzville? And then who's paying for that transportation because obviously, you know, there's those issues. So, that, that's the first set of issues. The second set of issues is if a child, if, you know, you get the situation we have with Normandy where they, you know, they were unaccredited and then there was attempts to move those kids out to St. Charles County and the St. Charles County districts were concerned about, or with having too many kids in their district and having their class sizes be too big. So, you know, the other thing I think open enrollment needs to handle is, okay, can a local board prevent students from coming into its district based upon class sizes? Like for instance, if, if we were to get a, a trove of kids that wanted to go to East and overpopulate the kindergarten classes, you know, we should have the authority to say, now wait a minute, you know, based upon our class sizes, we can't take those kids.
If we were, if we had two elementaries in that type scenario.
Yeah, so, so, so I think.
If they were out of district.
Yeah, out of, yeah, so if they were, wanted to come in throughout a district, then through an, through an open enrollment, you know, because the question becomes is, could, you know, in the open enrollment, could the kid petition for Warrenton to come to Wright City, you know, or is it by invitation only or how is all that going to work? So, you know, but we need to have, we need to be able to control our classroom sizes at whatever, whatever's going to occur with that. So I think that, you know, that could be a, an issue that, that would need to be addressed as we talk about open enrollment.
Well, you're going to see the news on it, so you can give me some feedback if the board ever wishes to bring that up as a discussion or if the board wishes to, to, you know, stake out position on that, myself as board president, we'll gladly put that on the agenda, further discussed, but I know that one's coming. It will probably, I, from my look right now, I bet that's the, oh, it's going to be one of the top issues, no doubt, although it will be the top issue. Certainly that bill's gotten traction the last couple of years.
Okay. Anything else you want to record?
Definitely we talked about this year. It'll, it'll be talked about a lot this year.
I think I've shared this before, but I have a good friend who, you know, runs chambers in another state that has open enrollment and as a, you know, chamber of commerce leader concerned about economic development, one of the issues that he has faced is the, the districts with kind of creating a have and have nots. And so, it, it has basically segregated his communities and that is my concern with, with open enrollment is creating disparity where there doesn't need to be. We have, we have, you know, standards to make our school districts strong, all of them. And so I would hate to see because of whatever, in whatever area, you know, I think people want to take their kids, bring their kids to Wright City. You know, I did. If there's another district and, you know, you, maybe a neighboring one is, you know, has the better athletic program or whatever, then you, you know, spend them, or maybe it's the parents that stay at home and they can afford to drive their kid to school and so then it just, it just segregates. And, and for, you know, economic development standpoint, that doesn't do anything to help the community.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
Okay. Next agenda item is the travel reimbursement from Alice Jensen. I need a motion to approve the travel reimbursement from Alice.
I'll make that motion.
Second. There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Staying?
Yes.
Six, zero, one. Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Please look at employment. Make sure you're not related to anybody by the fourth degree. Okay, I'm hearing that nobody wants to pull anything from consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. In accordance with provisions of section 61021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet in closed session in order to discuss 61021. Two, leasing, purchase or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefor. Three, hiring, firing or hiring, firing discipline or promoting of a particular employee by a public governmental body when the personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment. Fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law. I need a motion to go into closed session?
Summon.
Second.
There's a motion in second, any more discussion? Roll call starting with Austin, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, I have seven fifteen. Let's take a, about a five minute bio break.